We don't have a chair, so um first order of business is going to be to have one of you uh volunteer to be a acting chair. So who wants to pretend that they're chair for a day?
Volunteer.
Okay. Um yes. Do we need to walk you through this?
Yeah.
What by talking? All right.
Did you see how we did that?
Yes.
You have a lot of morals.
Okay, great. Good to know. Seven oh one, bringing the planning commission. What do I say exactly? Order. All right. So roll call. Ben, would you mind doing the roll call?
Mary Newell.
Here.
Tori Banford.
Here.
Carol Kowach.
Here.
Rich Spofford.
Here.
John Schulte.
Here.
Uh Mr. John Swanson and Andy Grow, notified staff earlier, they will not be attending tonight, and a quorum is present.
All right, thank you. Item number three, approval of minutes from the June meeting. Does everyone had a chance to review the minutes? If so, the motion to approve.
Second.
Person seconded. By Schulte, Commissioner Schulte and Kowash. Any discussion? All right. So move to approve and all on favor.
Hi.
Say hi. Thank you. Unanimous. Uh item five. Oh, yeah, sorry, public comment. So for the public comment, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak to the planning commission on topics that are not on the agenda. The mic is yours. And we will be getting to a staff presentation, five and public hearings. So if you're here for to make a comment on anything but those, you're welcome to do so. There's nobody like you. Okay. Seeing none. Moving on to item five, staff presentation, general fund presentation.
You're doing great.
Thanks.
Welcome. Thank you for allowing time for us to share this presentation with you. We're grateful for your time. I am Carlos Barry Antos, city councillor for the city of Dallas. And with me today is Charlie Mitchell. He is the Economic Community Development Director for the city of Dallas. We have an important message to share with you. As we share this presentation, we'll be reading from a script. Because the same presentation will be given many times and by different people. We want to ensure that each of the presentations are consistent and the same information is shared in the same way. At the end of this presentation, we will ask for your feedback. We will also be time at the end of presentation to ask questions. We will do our best to answer your questions. But questions that we cannot answer today, we will ask for your contact information and get the answer shortly. We do ask that you please hold any questions until the end of the presentation. We have provided question cards for you to write your questions on during the presentation to help with your recall the question at the end of the presentation. So let's jump right into it, and I'll have Charlie begin the presentation.
Thank you, Carlos. So today we're going to be talking about the city's general fund, discuss how to make and keep this important fund sustainable. What is the city's general fund? The general fund is one of many funds in the city's budget. General fund services typically do not have their own dedicated revenue source. An example of funding that does have its own revenue source, excuse me, is the water fund. The water fund is supported by water fees collected on the city bill. The city's general fund services are shown on the slide. It includes the state's police fire, aquatic center, parks for irrigation, library, and economic and community development, and a few others. So how does the general fund get funded? The general funds receive revenues principally through these seven sources. Those sources are property taxes, fees per service, franchise fees, state share revenues, municipal court lines, lodging taxes, and library share revenues. Again, these revenues support all of the city's services shown on the previous slide. The city's general fund is only part of the city's budget. Other funds include the building fund, utility funds, like water, sewer, and stormwater, and the street fund. City's general fund is less than thirty percent of the city's total budget. General fund revenues are unrestricted, meaning that they can be spent on any city service. And all of the other funds in the city's budget represented on this slide in red lettering are restricted funds. This means revenues for these funds can only be spent for the purposes the funds were collected. For example, building permit revenues can only be spent on building permitting and inspection services. Building permit revenues cannot be spent on general fund programs like police, fire, or library services. Now, let's talk about the issue we face in the general fund. City's trajectory for the general fund's beginning balance is forecasted on a pretty steep decline. The beginning fund balance is the best indicator of the healthy fund as it represents the money available at the beginning of the fiscal year. As can be seen in this graph, the city's general fund is projected to begin fiscal year twenty five, twenty six with a negative balance. Now, this cannot happen, which means immediate action is needed to sustain the fund. The city's financial policy is to have a beginning fund balance that is at least ten percent of the operating funds of the general fund. This amount is roughly one and a half million dollars. The red line shows the one and a half million dollar mark. Again, as can be seen, we need to take action now to ensure our beginning fund balance does not fall below the red line. We should note that the beginning fund balance in the last fiscal year and in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four is huge much higher than is normal. This is due to the infusion of one-time American Rescue Plan Act funding from the federal government. City council has decided to spend this one-time funding on the city's capital projects such as purchasing emergency response vehicles and updating economic development plans. This one-time revenue was not spent on personnel because that is not as sustainable when one-time revenue. So why does this issue exist? Well, first, the general fund revenues do not keep pace with expenditures. And then we'll talk more about Oregon Property Tax Valued Measures five and fifty and how they factor into this issue. In addition, locally in Dallas, general fund revenues have been negatively affected by losses in the city's tax base and franchise fees. Second, the city has experienced managed growth. As the city has experienced managed growth, the demand for city's general fund services has increased. A few examples of these increases include the addition of the Dallas Aquatic Center, the transition from a volunteer only to a combination of volunteer and paid fire protection personnel, and the addition of sworn police officers. Third is inflation. Cities, like all of us, are not immune to the effects of inflation. We have recently seen the cost of product and services increase dramatically. Finally, the city can no longer afford to defer any capital purchases, postponing projects and deferring maintenance of our facilities. We'll dive a little deeper into each of these causes. So Measure Five was approved by the Oregon voters in nineteen ninety. This measure, along with other things, split property taxes into education and non-education categories. Non-education categories include cities, counties, and special districts. This measure also limited the amount of property taxes that could be collected from an individual property to five dollars per thousand dollars of real market value for education and ten dollars per thousand dollars of real market value for non-education purposes. Measure fifty was approved by the Oregon voters in nineteen ninety seven. This measure established property tax rates for taxing authorities and prohibited a taxing authority from increasing this rate, hence the name permanent rate. The city of Dallas' permanent rate is four dollars and nineteen cents. Measure fifty also created an allowance for a taxing authority to ask its voters to approve local option levies. A local option levy is limited to a maximum five-year period. And finally, Measure fifty established assessed values for every property. His set values were based on nineteen ninety four values or ten percent below the nineteen ninety five real market value, whichever was less. Assessed values may not be increased by more than three percent per year. Assesses values may also decrease if the real market value drops below the assessed value. A final note on assessed values is that they do not reset at the time of property sales. This creates large disparities in tax bills for properties with similar characteristics and improvements. In summary, these two property tax measures limit the city's ability to increase property taxes to pay for increased costs of city services. In addition to Oregon property tax laws, shrinking the city's industrial tax base also had a negative impact on general fund revenues. Each of these major employers closed their doors prior to two thousand nine. The loss of these three businesses lowered the taxable value of the properties they once occupied. The amount of franchise fees the city collected through their operations was also eliminated. For example, at the top end of Dallas Mill Site paid more than four hundred thousand dollars in property taxes each year they operate in operation. Today, the property tax bill for the same property is only twenty five thousand. This is a significant reduction in the property taxes collected. The reduction in franchise fees stems as a result of these businesses no longer consuming utilities such as electrical power and gas. Because these businesses consume a lot of power and gas, they would pay large amounts of franchise fees for their consumption. Those fees would have been given to the city. When the consumption went away, so did the franchise fee revenue. Another important factor affecting the city's general fund is increases in demand for city services. For example, the Dallas Aquatic Center was constructed and operational in the year two thousand. This was a new general fund-supported service. The operation and ongoing maintenance of the facility is paid for with general fund revenues, including fee and membership dues for use of the aquatic center. In fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, the aquatic center had a cost recovery of nearly sixty one percent. This is second-best cost recovery for a general fund service, second only to the ambulance service. Our community continues to show strong support for the aquatic center, and we have great employees working there. Another example of increased demand for services was the transition of the city's fire protection service from a volunteer department to a combination department. This means that we use both paid daytime staff and volunteers to support nighttime calls. Since two thousand sixteen, the fire and EMS department has added nine full-time positions to its department. Seven of these positions are paid for out of the general fund. The other two positions are paid by the fire EMT fee collected with the city bill. We are very fortunate to have excellent employees and volunteers serve our community in the area of fire and EMS services. A final example of increased demand for services is the addition of six sworn police officers to the police department since two thousand sixteen. These increases have taken place over the past seven years and reflect growth in the community. Like the fire and EMS department, our community is very well served by excellent and professional police officers. The last factor we'll discuss, in fact, why the general fund sustainability issue exists is capital purchases and referral of projects and facility maintenance. A capital project is the purchase of a good or material that costs at least ten thousand dollars. The graph on this slide shows the forecasted need and budgeted amount of general fund capital expenses for the next four fiscal years. In fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty four, we were able to invest nearly six hundred thousand and four hundred thousand dollars each of those years for capital projects. The challenge is there were several capital projects, projects and facility maintenance needs that were deferred to later fiscal years because we did not have enough money to pay for all the needed purchases. This is no different than any budget where tough choices need to be made, and not everything is going to get done because the money just isn't there. In the next four fiscal years, the city is forecasting a need for about one million dollars to one point three million dollars in general fund capital projects. This is shown by the blue bar in the graph. Forecasted budget is shown by the orange bars on the graph. A couple of examples of capital purchases, projects, or facilities maintenance that has been deferred include the replacement of a twenty-eight-year-old fire truck, aged police vehicles, and new roofs and sites, park buildings, and structures. So now that we've discussed what the general fund is, and several of the factors affecting its sustainability keep us from questioning of how do we resolve this issue? There are both long-term and immediate solutions. The long-term solution is to grow the city's industrial and commercial tax base. The immediate solution is either to increase general fund revenues or reduce the city's general fund services. The good news is that the city is very actively working on a long-term solution. However, as I'll show a bit later, the solution will take many years to bear through. So this means that we need both the long-term solution and an immediate solution to make and keep the general fund sustainable now and into the future. I'll now turn some time over to Carlos, who will discuss in greater detail much of the good work that the city is doing on the long-term solution.
So as was just noted, the long-term solution of making a general fund sustainable is to grow the city's tax base. This is best accomplished by adding expanding commercial and industrial businesses into the Dallas economy. The city has seen some recent wins in this area. One example of an industrial business recruitment was working with Ascetic Engineering to purchase the former Craigett Cert and Tyco Building. Working with Ascetic Engineering on the they are located on a moment cut off road that fans metal manufacturing businesses. Ascetic has and plans to invest millions of dollars in the business property in their business bringing many family wage jobs to the local community. As an example of commercial expansion is Open Roads Headquarters on East Ellendale. As shown in this photo, as you can see, this project is currently under construction and is a multi-million dollar investment into the local economy or existing Dallas business. You may ask yourself, why isn't all the residential growth in Dallas fixing this issue? The reason is because commercial and industrial development attacks at a higher percentage of the real market value than is residential development. Further, residential development uses more general fund-supported services than commercial and industrial development. So by targeting growth in the commercial and industrial sectors, we are focusing on high revenue and low resources consuming development. This next slide helps paint a picture of why growing the tax base is a long-term solution. The city needs about two million additional revenues each year to make the general fund sustainable. It would take four hundred and seventy-six million in assessed value for Dallas to raise two million in general fund revenue. When you convert this into the real market value investment for single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and industrial category, it kind of looks like this. For the single-family residential development, the city would need to add seven hundred sixty-two million in real market value or over two thousand five hundred homes with a sale value of three hundred thousand. For multifamily residential development, the city would need to add seven hundred and six million in real market value. For commercial development, the city would need to add seven oh six million in real market value. And lastly, for industrial development, the city would need to add four hundred seventy-six million in real market value. When you look at this breakdown, it becomes clear that the best way to add additional property taxes revenue to the city general fund is through the industrial development. To work towards increasing the industrial tax base, the city council in two thousand twenty-two created the South Dallas Urban Renewal Plan in area. This area is shown here on this map and includes a shaded area. The blue shading are areas zone for industrial development, while the red shading is commercially zoned area. And the light brown area is so residential. The urban renewal program will enable the city to financially incentivize industrial and manufacturing development on our vacant and underutilized industrial lands. The urban renewal program will also enable the city to address the root variants to the developments such as the wetland mitigation and flooding issues on these properties by utilizing the state of Oregon's industrial site readiness program. Another way the city is addressing a long-term solution is to help the former mill site redevelop. The city is actively working with property owner for this project. City has developed a good worker relationship with the owner of the property. Together, we have obtained a grant to hire a consultant to develop and to redevelopment land. Finally, the city has also completed flood studies of the north of the Ash Creek, which runs through this property causing from flooding issues. Another way the city is working towards a long-term solution is master planning the area north of Ellendale's and Latrial Drive to increase commercial land supply to the city. The red and the blue areas on the map of the area areas planned for commercial index used zoning. This plan would add roughly ninety acres of commercial land to the city inventory of commercial land available for development. This project is underway with a technical advisory development. This project uh this project is underway with a technical advisory committee working through the planning process. In addition, infrastructure, planning, and design work is also underway. So this area will be served for the city's uh utilities. The final way we'll discuss how the city is addressing a long-term solution is by increasing the city's water storage capacity. The city receives its water from the coast range Maunspur Rainfall. We capture the water in an arid mercer reservoir. If we want to improve industries, we have a high water demand. We must increase our storage capacity. We will do this by expanding the capacity of the mercer reservoir. The planning work for this is underway. We are actively working with the state to obtain water storage rights. This project is several years' long effort. Lastly, we will mention that the city council recently enacted water rate increases to actively set aside fundings for this project. Now, having reviewed the great work the city is doing on a long-term solution and understanding that an immediate solution is also needed to sustain the city's general fund, let's take a look at the four options for an immediate solution. Option one is to present the voters with a public safety operational levy for approval. If approved, the current public safety levy on the city bill would be removed. Option two is to present the voters with a pack and recreation district for approval and increase the public safety levy in the city bill. Option three is to present the voters for with a public safety operation Option three is to present the voters for, with a public safety operation levy for approval and increase the public safety fee on the city bill. And lastly, option four is to make widespread reduction in general fund services. I'll turn the presentation back to Charlie, who will explain each of the four options in more detail.
So option one is a public safety operating levy and removing the public safety fee from the city bill. The public safety levy would be a five-year property tax on the taxpayers inside the city limits of Dallas. As such, the levy would be voted on by the electorate inside the Dallas city limits. The public safety fee is a four dollar and ninety-five cent fee that is collected monthly on the city bill. This fee generates roughly four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue each year. It was designed to pay for two police officers and two firefighter EMTs. If the public safety operating levy were to pass, then this fee would be removed from the monthly city bill once tax revenues are collected. Option one would sustain the general fund over the next five years by adding revenues to directly support public safety services. Under option one, the public safety levy would be in the amount of one dollar and ninety cents for one thousand dollars in assessed property value. This is the highest tax rate of any option presented here today because this option would also remove the current public safety fee from the city bill. Under option one, a Dallas property owner whose property is assessed at three hundred thousand dollars would pay an additional five hundred and seventy dollars a year in property taxes. Also, under this option, no one is paying the monthly public safety fee. Option two is the creation of a parks and recreation district and increasing the monthly public safety fee on the city bill. Parks and Recreation District is a standalone taxing authority with its own elected governing body and staff. If created, the city would turn over the ownership and operation of all city and Dallas parks and recreation amenities and programs. Parks and Recreation District can only be created by an affirmative of the registered voters inside the boundary of the proposed district. The proposed Parks and Recreation District boundary is the same boundary as the current Dallas School District boundary. If approved and a new tax is established, it would be paid for by the taxpayer both inside and outside Dallas city limits. If the district were created, the tax rate to support the district would be a permanent tax rate. Also, under option two, it is proposed that the public safety fee currently on the city bill be increased to pay for public safety personnel. Option two sustains the general fund by removing the parks and recreation expenditures from the city's budget and by adding revenues directly to public safety services. Under option two, the Parks and Recreation District permanent tax rate would be the amount of one dollar and twenty-five cents for one thousand dollars of assessed property value. This is the lowest rate of any option. The public safety fee would increase from four dollars and ninety-five cents to ten dollars and fifty cents each month. Under option two, the Dallas property owner who also pays a monthly city bill would pay four hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents more each year than they currently pay. Option three is a public safety operating levy and increasing the monthly public safety fee on the city bill. Option three is similar to option one, except that instead of all the revenue being generated by the public safety levy, the city would also generate funding from increasing the public safety fee collected through the monthly city bill. Unlike option one, the public safety levy in option three would be a five-year property tax on the taxpayers inside the city limits of Dallas. As such, the levy would be voted on by the electorate inside the Dallas city limits. The public safety fee again is a four dollar and ninety-five cent fee that is collected monthly in the city bill. The fee generates roughly four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue each year and it was designed to pay for two police officers and two firefighter EMTs. Under option three, the public safety fee would be increased. Option three sustains the general fund over the next five years by adding revenue to directly support public safety services. Under option three, the public safety levy would be the amount of one dollar and thirty cents for one thousand of assessed property value. In addition, the public safety fee would increase from four dollars and ninety-five cents to ten dollars and fifty cents each month. Under option three, a Dallas property owner who also pays a monthly city bill would pay four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty cents more each year than they currently pay. Option four reduces our expenditures to meet our current revenue. The city previously did this in twenty-twenty by making personal reductions to better align general fund expenditures with revenues. Today, if any revenue solution is not preferred, then reductions to general fund services starting in July twenty-twenty-four will be necessary. Those reductions will be as follows. Eliminating six positions from the fire and EMS department, including three paramedic EMTs, two firefighter EMTs, and one division chief. This reduction will impact service delivery, including increased response times, reliance on mutual aid partners, and putting patients in healthcare crises at risk of not receiving immediate care. In addition, the community risk and reduction program will be suspended indefinitely and the department's community involvement activities such as school visits, CPR, and ED classes will be limited. Next, we will eliminate six positions from the police department, including a sergeant, traffic safety officer, school resource officer, detective, and two patrol officers. These reductions will impact service delivery, including proactive traffic enforcement, no in-school police presence, longer time to process and resolve criminal matters, and reducing the number of police officers available to respond to calls for service. In addition, we will close the aquatic center and eliminate thirty-six employee positions. This reduction permanently closes the only publicly accessible facility in the community. It would also negatively impact the school swim programs and physical therapists in Dallas who use the center for their businesses. Next, we will close the Dallas Public Library on Saturdays and eliminate one position. This reduction restricts the city's library to weekday use only with very limited hours for persons who work full-time jobs. Finally, we will eliminate the parks manager position, one code services position, a halftime parks maintenance position, and a halftime facility maintenance position. These cuts would reduce the maintenance in our parks and eliminate all recreation programming. These cuts will also increase the amount of time to resolve code violation issues such as inoperable vehicles, NRVs parked on the city streets, and removing junk from private property. As a final note, even with these reductions, the city would continue to collect the current four dollar and ninety-five cent public safety fee on the city bill. This next slide will show a side-by-side comparison of each of the four options. The total cost to a Dallas property owner who also pays the city bill for option one through three are shown by what it would cost you each week. Option one is the most expensive option and would cost you nine dollars and eighty-two cents per week. Another way of looking at this cost is it would cost you two and a half lots of cents. Option two is the least expensive option. It would cost you eight dollars and forty-nine cents per week or two. Option three costs eight dollars and seventy-four cents per week or two and a quarter lots. And option four does not cost you any more money. However, you will receive longer public safety response times, no aquatic center, no weekend library service, and less parks maintenance in our city's parks and trailer facilities. I'll now turn the time back to Carlos. We will discuss the next steps of this process and facilitate any questions that we may have.
So what is next? The city council wants to feedback. If we're not going to feedback, we have to please complete a feedback form before leaving today. We will pass out the feedback form in just a few minutes. We do ask that you please include your name at the top of the form and that you only complete one form per person. The council will meet this fall and consider your collective feedback before making any decisions on which option to pursue. If option one, two, or three is selected, a ballot measure will be placed on the May two thousand twenty-four election. If option four is selected or an attempted ballot measure fails to be approved, the reduction outlined in option four will take effect in July first of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for having us here today. We know that this was a lot of information to take in and we appreciate your patience and attentiveness. We're happy to answer your question and as a quick reminder, if we don't have an answer to your questions today, we will get, we will get your contact information and find out the answer and get back to you. What are your questions?
So everybody have the two forms should be a
I have a question about just the context of this discussion. Uh, this is a planning commission or land use commission. Is this addressing us as citizens, just providing us information? Is there anything in this that's actionable by this commission?
So, um, Mr. Shelby, the answer to that question is, this is one of up to forty different road shows and the city managers calling them to uh, assemble bodies so that we can get in front of as many people from diverse backgrounds, representing communities possible. Um, so the short answer to your question is, no, we're not looking for the planning commission taking action amongst that have been presented tonight. Uh, so I think it's safer to say that you're being presented this as citizens of Dallas.
I do have one follow-on question. Thank you for that. There is a land use issue in this, I think. And that is, if I understand this correctly, we keep adding residential growth here. Lots of it with a lot more planned. That's a tax problem. I heard you're right. Why do we keep doing that? If, if the revenue and property tax doesn't support the services, why do we keep doing it?
So Chase can jump in here, but I think the short answer is we're following our comprehensive plans already in the document. So the land is so residential for our comp plan is allowed to develop as residential. If we wanted to alter that comp plan or alter that, those underlying zoning designations to something other than residential, we would need to go through that whole process.
Yeah, but I mean, isn't that a policy issue, a land issue?
If, if I can, then in part, it's a statement that he comes, that city could maintain a twenty-year supply of buildable land. Once, and that's, that's inside the urban growth boundary. Um, and once it's inside the urban growth, it is developed for commercial, industrial, and residential purposes. So the state doesn't allow cities to basically stop growing. State requires cities to participate in growth by maintaining that land supply. So we're being pushed by the state to continue to allow growth. Um, it partly is supposed to take our fair share because the cities started closing their gates to development and then we push development to other communities inequitably. Uh, so we're all kind of in this little mess together.
But if it's not financially sustainable, why isn't that applicable to the state?
That takes state action to reduce, um, uh, the requirement to accommodate growth. Frankly, that's just the opposite direction that legislators are going, where in fact housing is being encouraged because of the shortage of houses in the state. So you have lots of different cross currents going.
But my, my point is, I've been on this commission for two years. The subject has never been raised. And why is that? I mean, it's, it's a policy issue here that we never, have never discussed, to my knowledge. That's the kind of thing, I don't mean to get off on the tangent, but that's the kind of thing I keep saying we need to have a conversation amongst us. Soon, so sorry, but, so, okay, we, we appreciate the information.
Any other questions?
I have a couple.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Um, I understand the, the concept of financing very well. I spent over twenty years in commercial finance. And, um, I just, I just have a couple of questions about, we have some items that can only be paid in a specific way. And then we have a general fund where we pay the balance, the thirty percent. And I'm just trying to understand how we got this far down the road before we realized we didn't have enough revenue to support all these positions we just added. And, um, how we're trying to shore it up in other ways than just this because I'm not sure these will be passed. And so I'm just trying to figure out, okay, worst case scenario, have we raised SDCs? Have we done other things? Have we done, uh, can we defer part of the capital improvements? How would that look? What else have we done to try to make it all come together?
So I'll do my best to answer parts of that that I, I am able to answer. So first of all, I mentioned SDCs. Those cannot go in the general fund. So that's on top of it.
Okay.
Um, you had a question about, um, what was your last question?
Well, we didn't even know we had this issue, it seems, or maybe we just didn't address it for a while.
It has been raised in the past and actions have been taken. It's just the, the, oh, there are other part of the questions.
Capital improvements.
It's the city manager's opinion and the council's opinion that we can't afford the land. We've already been delayed.
Mm-hmm.
We've been, every year we've been
Kicking the can. I got it.
So, uh, we can't, we're, it's, it's been decided that we can't afford to do that anymore. We have to take affirmative action.
So we're going to get rid of all the police instead.
Not necessarily. Well, we, I mean, I think the
I mean, I'm trying to understand.
Goal is to be able to continue to provide the services in the city that we're paying and providing for now.
Okay.
The goal is not to eliminate anything, but if that's the will of the voters, then that's what we want to do.
And they've been notoriously stingy about passing such levies, so I'm concerned. In my thirty years, I've seen just one or two little ones go through.
The last comment, if I may, and then I guess we need to move on. There should be a fifth option in here, in my view, which is a blend of some of this. This is kind of a drama show. It's all or nothing, and, and that's just not real.
Yeah, that's a good point and that, that question, that comment or that, uh, opinion or option has been raised by others as well. Um, the way that we're looking at like it, so if we were to put out an option, like increasing taxes and do a reduction at the same time, the method you're sending to people is we want you to pay more for less services when you're getting today. That's a very difficult message to sell. Because that's the essence of what we think. If you combine those, that's the message you'd be sending.
But it's the rational approach. It just means you have to sell it there.
The follow-up question I have is, how many years have we had reductions to the beginning balance of the city fund?
That would be a good question for us to follow up on.
One of the things that would be helpful probably to a lot of people that aren't as budget-minded is to maybe see even a graph of how the, how the money is collected and how the money is spent. Because what you're showing us is possible solutions without the base budget to look at.
Okay, please take that comment too. We had attempted to do that at the very beginning of the presentation by showing um, what the sources of revenue for the general fund and the I in the general fund revenue.
It's hard just looking at the words. Some people need, like me, deep cross. Okay, thank you.
You mentioned, uh, forty-stop roadshow. What stop are you on now? Is this second?
Well, again, we're, Carlos and Eric, we're, we're not doing all this. This, this body of work is divided between every member of the city council and every member of the city's management. And so I think this is probably somewhere between six and ten. These are going to continue through like end of August to September.
What other forums? Like, how are you reaching out to the community? So, um, events, like you're gonna have a booth downtown or anything like that? How are you getting out to?
Again, we're really trying to go where the people are. This is probably the best example. This is kind of the city function there. Um, they're going to like, um, Dallas, Tarryn Village and school board meetings and other meetings to get where groups are already assembled, having their rate for games and just getting a spot on there and shit. There have been a few homeowners associations. So we're trying to get out into the community where people are gathered.
Well, same to us then. I mean, we all have this. We all have friends that live here and know people. Um, I know last weekend on the river, I was explaining some of this stuff to just people that were all there just hanging out on the beach and saying, hey, these things are coming up. We all need to pay attention to this and, and figure out what it is that we all want to do. So I think that's as commissioners for the city, that's part of our role is to help educate other people too.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're looking at, you guys are community leaders, uh, and your point is asking leaders and so, um, Um, there is an expectation if you're, so to the education, it was like you're.
All right, thank you. It sounds like it was an engaging topic and a lot of opportunity for commissioners as community members to participate. In ongoing conversation. So thank you both.
Wondering if anyone has any issues on public safety.
All right, thank you. The item six A on the agenda. Is a conditional use permit. And so I'll start a public hearing. I'll read from the script. There's a public hearing regarding a property. At eight forty nine Southwest Hater Street. Is an official public hearing before the Dallas Plan Commission. I now declare this public hearing open at. Seven forty five P M. As application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law. I'll read the following statement, the failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail. To afford the commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Procludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and applicable criteria listed in the staff report or the cra- or to the criteria in the Dallas Development Code. You believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria found in. And chapters.
Four point four and two point two.
At this time, I'll ask if any member of the plant commission has a conflict of interest, I visit or ex parte contact to declare. Saying no. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided a five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I'll close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate and then ask there is a motion or response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. This time, we'll start with the staff report, but we have the staff report, please.
I'm going to, uh, take my microphone with me because it looks like the batteries on the one up here have died. But yes, you may have a step for. Uh, Chase Blue, a city planner for the city of Dallas. Um, so, uh, short term vacation rentals, um, under the development code, they're classified as a conditional use. Um, and so there's, uh, three approval criteria for conditional uses. Um, and then conditionally, this also have to satisfy the criteria for site designer reviews. There's an additional five criteria for those. Um, staff report kind of steps through those, uh, step by step. Um, so for our first hearing today, uh, for Jordan Myers property, uh, eight forty nine Southwest Hater. Which we can see on the map is here, um, on the, uh, the west side of town there, uh, just on the edge of downtown. Or just outside the edge of downtown, I should say. Um, as we can see from the zoning, it's in the low density residential zone, um, starting to buy a low density residential. Um, but again, you can start to see the, uh, the edge of the downtown there on that zoning map. Um, as we look at the, the air photo of the site, you can see it's developed with an existing, uh, single family dwelling. Um, there is some parking along the side of the, uh, dwelling there. Um, and we can also see that from the, uh, the site photo, um, which has the, the house there and then the, uh, the driveway off to the side. Um, of note, the, uh, the driveway is a gravel driveway. Um, and so there is a condition of approval that's, uh, tied to improvements to that. Um, the recommendation, uh, of staff is that the, uh, uh, application be approved. Um, with a certain approval criteria related to, uh, building and fire code requirements. Um, compliance with, uh, plans as presented with planning commission. Um, registering with the city finance office for payment of the, uh, transient lodging tax. Limiting the number of occupants based on the square footage of the dwelling. And then, um, in reference to that driveway being gravel, um, as we mentioned. Um, obtaining an encroachment permit and, uh, paving the section of the driveway that is between the sidewalk and the curb. Um, in order to keep gravel from being tracked out into the public street, uh, consistent with the current, uh, construction standards. Um, so that's kind of the staff report that I have on the, uh. Property there. Um, no major concerns from the staff point of view. It seems like. Um. Maybe the full public hearing type three conditional uses may be a little excessive, given the scope of the impacts. Uh, from short term vacation rentals. So perhaps in a future code update, we might consider. Streamlining that, but here we are. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that, uh, that folks may have, uh, for staff.
Any questions, Steph? Saying no. Applicant has now has time to present on the project. There are an applicant like to speak to it. Okay.
Sure. Um, the applicants in, uh. Decided not to come tonight.
Okay. So questions of the applicant? And rebuttal. Yeah.
Nobody else wants to be heard on this application?
Okay, closing the public hearing at seven fifty P M. Anything to discuss? On the project, on the proposal? Not.
I'm sure we are to prove it.
Yes, subject to the recommended conditions.
And.
All right.
So motion.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Newell, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. So vote on any discussion? Okay. Looking for a vote. To approve with staff recommendations? Uh, Mary Newell, Tori Banford. Yes. Carol Kowash.
Yes.
Rich Spofford.
Yes.
John Schulte.
Yes.
All right. Vote as unanimous in support. Thank you. Onto the next public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding property address at thirteen twenty one Southwest Fourteenth Street. Is official public hearing before the Dallas Plan Commission. I now declare as public hearing open at. Seven fifty two P M. As application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I'll read the following statement. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail. To afford the commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Procludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and applicable criteria listed in the staff report. Or to the criteria in the Dallas Development Code, you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria found in.
Two point four, two point two.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if any members of plant commission has a conflict of interest, I visit or ex parte to the. Saying no. Here will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with staff report followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission thereafter. We will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on the item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We'll then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I'll close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate, then ask there is a motion response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. We have the staff report, please.
Hello again. Um, I'm still Chase Blue. Uh, last I checked, I still work for the city of Dallas. I don't think that's changed in the last five minutes. Um, so, uh, again, same approval criteria for conditional uses. Um, as the previous, uh, uh, application, so. Um, there you go. Uh, this one is, uh, on Southwest Fourteenth Street. That's over by, uh, the Oakdale, uh, school there. Uh, on the far western era edge of town. Um, as we can see, uh, from the, uh, the, uh, zoning map, uh, it's a single family, uh, RL, uh, zone. Um, so, yep. Uh, we can see from this vicinity photo that it's developed with an existing dwelling, um, as well as some off street parking. Which we can also see then from the, uh, the street view. Um, and so, yeah. Uh, again, staff recommendation on this one is, uh, to approve with, uh, substantially the same, uh, approval criteria as the previous request. Uh, minus the requirement for, uh, paving since the site is already, uh, improved to city standards. Um, so, yeah. Questions for staff?
Any questions?
I just have a general question.
Certainly.
Um, how many of these do we already have?
How many Airbnbs or short term vacation rentals, or if you want to raise them? Mm hmm. Um, so this will be, uh, the third conditional use permit that we've, uh, done. Um, uh, so we did, uh, one in twenty nineteen on Heath Street. Uh, we did one, uh, about five minutes ago, um, on Hater Street, and now we're doing this one on Fourteenth Street.
So maybe at some point we want to talk about. What the city wants to do in the future with vacation homes and where they should be cited?
Uh, certainly, there could be some policy discussion on that, uh, in, in the future.
No, we're not here to do that right now.
This is true.
Noting it.
Mm hmm. Yep, certainly. It's something that could be, be discussed in the future. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we think there are any possibly operating without this conditional use permit?
I, I think that there's a, a high likelihood of that, and I know that it's something that our, uh. Uh, code enforcement folks have been, uh, taking a look at recently. So, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me if they find some that have not been compliant.
They advertise themselves online.
They're not hard to find, although.
The name, but.
Although from what I've heard, there is still quite a few listings that were created during the eclipse. Um, that still reference hay stay here during the eclipse. So how many of them are actual rentals versus? Things that someone did once and then forgot about, like. That's a different question. So I don't have firm numbers for you on that sort of thing at the moment. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Um, it's now available for the applicant to present on the front, on the proposal. Welcome, if you could, say your name, address, information for the record.
Kevin Montague, thirteen twenty one Southwest Fourteenth Street in Dallas. Um, so thank you for taking the opportunity, a lot of opportunity to come and talk to you commissioners, and I want to thank, um. City Planner Chase Blue for assisting me and in navigating the code sections that are applicable to this, uh, application. I used to know the code inside out when I developed for over twenty years in the city of Dallas. Um, but that was, um, over a decade ago, so that didn't. So I appreciate that the assistance pointing out where to get to those criteria. Um, in reviewing those criteria, um, as Chase mentioned. The, the request meets all of the, all of them or exceeds all of the, the criteria. Um, a little bit of a, a nuanced kind of to, to, uh, maybe lay some fears on, on commissioner. Um, this is still my primary residence. Um, so there's, uh, I built the home. I built seven of the ten homes that are in the, uh. The notification area, uh, so I have a vested interest in the neighborhood and making sure that it stays, um, the, the neighborhood that, that, um, folks are familiar with. Um. I don't work in Dallas any longer, so I, I find that, um, travel and, and vacation oftentimes I'm, I'm away from Dallas for, um, potentially. Depending on the season of, of, of time of year, up to three weeks. Um, and I also own, um, fifteen acres adjacent to an urban growth boundary. Um, where I've had to have the sheriff come and, um. Removed some transient folks, uh, camps and tents over the last few years. Um, a couple of which were arrested with, uh, outstanding warrants. So there's concern when I, when I'm not, um, at home, when I'm, uh, traveling, um. So over the last few years, I have rented it to, um, rented space in the home to family friends and for long term. Um, uh. Six months, four months, those types of things. Uh, so recently I, I had been renting to a, a longtime family friend who just moved to, uh, the Dakotas. And I got looking and said, okay, that, uh, it just makes sense to potentially have it for some other shorter stays. I like longer stays because I can vet the folks and, and do better with that and understand. Um, but just having that conditional use and wanting to comply with all the, all of the requirements. So again, just I have, uh, again vested interest. Um, I've spoken with, with, uh, various neighbors. In fact, one of my neighbors, um, has agreed to, uh, do the cleaning of the property. Um, and so it creates a, an additional, uh, revenue stream for, for her. Um, and it's such a great neighborhood that, um. I know they, they watch out for it. We all watch out for each other's properties and, um, I think this is a, a good fit for the, for the, for the property.
Right. Thank you. Any questions, applicant?
Just a pure, just for my knowledge, that's all.
Sure.
Or maybe I'm not. Ask the question. So long term rentals. Are not applicable to any approval process, only vacation rent?
As far as I'm aware, uh, twenty eight days and less are, are fall into the short term vacation. Anything longer does not, does not require anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Right? So anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else? In the room, uh, wishing to provide testimony on this topic?
What was the fee?
The fee?
For, for the application or for the transit lodging tax?
Uh, application, I guess, the permit.
Yes, so, um, at the time that the application was received, uh, conditional use permits were a thousand dollars. Um, I do believe that's gone up slightly with the, the fee increase that took place, uh, at the beginning of July. Um, I don't recall what the current fee is, but I do believe it went up a little bit.
Um, what's the percentage on the transient tax?
Ooh, Lane, do you know what that is?
Nine percent?
Nine.
Thank you.
I wrote it, but it's been a long time.
It's okay. Just curious.
Okay. Closing the public hearing at eight oh two P M. Any discussion deliberation among the commissioners? Not, I'll entertain motion.
I move to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions in this staff report.
Okay, Commissioner Schulte is in a motion. Is there a second?
Sir.
Okay, Commissioner. Uh. Says a P on there. Sorry. Spuffer, sorry, a seconded discussion. Okay, seeing them. Good. Roll call.
Mary Newell.
Yes.
Tori Banford.
Yes.
Carol Kowash.
Yes.
Rich Spofford.
Yes.
John Schulte.
Yeah.
Okay. In unanimous group. Thank you. It's all of our public hearings. Item seven, Commissioner comments. Comments. Staff comments.
Um, so one of the things that, uh, the commission has asked in the past is to be, uh. Kept appraised as, as projects move forward. Um, so kind of, uh, keeping the spirit of. Kept appraised as as projects move forward. Um, so kind of uh keeping the spirit of that. Um, at the one of the previous uh meetings that we had to do, one of the previous hearings. We were discussing development code updates. Um, and so uh planning commission made a recommendation that that be advanced to city council and that city council uh approve it. Uh, city council um reviewed it at a a public hearing and decided to um. Uh, potentially make some changes, so they have extended into a series of workshop sessions. Um, and so we will see uh what comes out of the workshop sessions, if they end up making changes or just. Um, want to have a better understanding of uh what the proposals are and what the potential implications of those might be. Um, so not sure what the final outcome of that's going to be yet, but that uh. Has extended the timeline on that uh project just ever so slightly.
Yet again.
Yes, it was. It was amusing. They said, hey, we we want to have a little further discussion of, you know, this thing, that thing. And also this other thing. Maybe we should talk about this thing. And by the time they were done, they had like ten things. It's like, well, that's. That's probably going to be more than one workshop session, so um. We will keep you uh posted as as those uh are updated. Yes.
Yeah.
So I have a process question.
Sure.
Um, related to the city of Dallas and um. The budget and future meetings.
Hmm.
So. We're supposed to be a legislative body. Can we be party to this in any meaningful way and not get crosswise with? Our legislative purpose?
I would think ultimately the planning commission is an advisory body on legislative matters with that.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Because ultimate ultimate decision making is with the county.
Some quasi judicial applications like that, but on politics matters, it is advisory to the council.
Okay. I think I understand.
But that's the subject that's pending for our group discussion. That's on the list.
Yes, it is.
And I did see that you put together a really nice uh list of questions that you had, and so I've been working on putting together a response to that, and. I'm sorry to not have that in time for you uh this session. Uh, but hopefully next month I'll have a an actual kind of response to be able to share with y'all. Assuming that the agenda for next month isn't like hours and hours long. If we go until ten thirty, we might decide to postpone that, but.
I'll make this.
Okay.
Commissioner Kowash raises a good point. Um, because whenever we're together as a majority, it's public. Public hearing potentially. So it's one of those where, you know, as they're doing the roadshow for showing up for those things. Just need to watch our numbers and how we participate. Uh, we go through the processes of as far as uh conflict of interest, ex parte, those kind of things. So just be mindful of. Where and how you participate. Watch your numbers, I guess.
Well, and it's it's a challenge as well. Um, we don't have public hearings because often it looks like the agenda then is empty, so we. Want to be respectful of your time and not have you here if there's not stuff for you to do. But then we don't necessarily get to the subject of, well, having those. Bigger picture discussions not tied to particular applications, so um we will. Uh, try not to do that uh for the next foreseeable future till we can get you some answers on some of these things, have some uh facilitated discussion, so.
Sounds great. All right. Anything else? That means adjourned at eight oh seven P M.